I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Rule of the minutes. We've got to date on minutes. Everything has been presented. Any additions or corrections? Seeing none, they will stand approved as submitted. Approval of the current financial report. Y'all received copies of that. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the financials?
Motion by Mr. Tryon to approve the current financial report. Discussion? Call roll, please.
Pensley?
Yes.
Hattishell?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Tryon?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Rule of the agenda. I have one item to add. Actually, it's a request for an executive session under Highway Revise Code 121.22G3, which is conference with an attorney regarding threatening or pending litigation. And that's all I have.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Motion by Mr. Schmidt to approve the agenda as amended. Discussion? Call roll, please.
Pensley?
Yes.
Hattishell?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Tryon?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Public hearings. There are nothing scheduled, but before we proceed, we had a technical error, a hitch in our get along, or whatever you want to call it, and the public notice was not presented for the public hearing on the application from the Brother in Retirement community in a timely enough manner. So, we cannot have that hearing as that was scheduled for September the 5th. It has to be rescheduled for September the 19th. So, it'll be the second meeting in September, which will be the application for a zoning amendment of the Greenville Zoning and Planning Commission that was from the Brother in Retirement community. So, that meeting, or that will be set, announced tonight. That'll be 30 days till the next meeting on September the 19th. Okay? Got that in the minutes? Now, anyone wishing to address counsel may do so. Please come to the microphone if you can and state your business.
Mark Mittelkopf, representing Person Centered Services, or PCS, tonight. I have brought a guest with me tonight that would like to approach counsel and thank them for the reserved parking spot that you approved at the last meeting at the Roundhouse. Ms. Paula Laney?
I want to thank you guys for putting the healing gaps sign up in the hope. And I want to thank you for letting us use the PCS well.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's it. Thank you, counsel.
Mark, I'd like to thank you and the organization and the young lady for taking the initiative to open the Roundhouse this year and provide that services to the public. It's been a great service, and I've enjoyed watching the crowds around there. So, thank you.
And Mr. Mittelkopf informed me, little cough, I'm sorry, informed me that this lady is the manager of the Roundhouse, and she is a tyrant. So, beware. Just be nice when you go out there. Thank you for your service, young lady.
Thank you.
You go, girl.
Anyone else wishing to address counsel, please come to the microphone. Thank you for coming tonight. Wow. Okay. We will move the agenda. Going on to administrative reports. Mr. Mayor?
I have one thing to bring up, and I suppose, are you the only representative here, Gus?
I am, sir. I am.
This is our board director, Mr. Gies. I have a check from the city for our community funds for $6,000.
I appreciate it. We appreciate everybody's support on this. Seeing cameras, do you? We appreciate everybody's support on this. Obviously, progress is moving along. Left the boys soccer scrimmage come up here real quick tonight. For a quick update, turf's in, installed.
Can I have you go to the microphone over there? Yeah. That way, it can go out over the TV and people can hear you a little better. Thank you.
Friends of Harmon, Greenville City Schools appreciate the support from the city and obviously all of our donors with this project. Just a quick update. The turf has been installed, obviously. We've had multiple activities out there already, and the track project is moving as scheduled right now. Asphalters came in today, so that process has started. And hopefully, within the next six to eight weeks, we should see almost completion of the track facility. So, hopefully, by October time, both facilities will be fully functional for our students and our community. So, we appreciate everybody's support. Appreciate the city working with us greatly on this project. So, thank you.
I'll just point out to the rest of the council, this $6,000 is added to the $9,000 the council gave last year out of community funds. And at the time that Hummer Fields approached this, they were looking at different levels, and $15,000 basically bought a lane on the track. So, the city of Greenville contributed one of the lanes on the track. I'm not sure which one, but I like the insight that's the shortest.
Number one. Number one. Thank you guys again.
Thank you.
I'm gonna sneak out of here and go back to soccer.
There you go.
Thanks, guys.
That was short and sweet. Moving on, Safety Service Director, Mr. Garrison.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I have a few things to discuss this evening, starting off with the ongoing projects. Beginning with our Fort Switzer Street project. Again, the water and sewer lines continue to go in. Believe we are reaching almost the completion of this project with First United Methodist Church, the installation of their sewer and water line, I believe, went in this week. What is left, we are currently doing the water line tie-ins on the side streets, such as Central and Euclid. And I believe there are a few miscellaneous water services to get people hooked up to the new main. So, it is still our hope that either by the end of the month or shortly thereafter, we will be wrapping that project up. I can't say for sure, but it would be a goal of mine this week to get all the way to Vine Street with pavement repair, or at least get the trenches filled, that we could open up Vine Street for the fairs. It would be open from Vine to Pine, just to help alleviate some of the fair traffic through town. Another ongoing project, actually have it listed under upcoming projects, but it's an ongoing project, is our 2017 maintenance paving project. I know as we have talked about paving in the past, at least for the last two years, we have not always had good things to necessarily say about the end result. And it seemed like it was coming with complications. This year, it's been 180-degree turnaround. It has been a pleasant experience to work with Walls Brothers and the completion of the 2017 paving project. We're pushing almost $1 million in paving. And with that large of an investment in our community, we want to make sure that it's done right, and we want the project to go well. We've spent a lot of extra time this year concentrating on what we call base repair. So, after we mill the street, we determine, some places you can determine that the areas are failing without milling. Other areas, you determine after you've milled. Walls Brothers have been good about coming back and fixing those areas for us. And then, we're moving on with the final course of asphalt. I believe, right now, we are up in the north end of town off of Russ Road. They'll be coming back down to Harmon and then on to Water. With a special note, that Russ Road will be completed on Thursday. It will be very congested on Thursday, as we will be doing the scratch coat during the day, and then, we will be doing the surface coat that evening. So, there will be no paving on Friday or over the weekend. Final touches will be done next week. So, if you can avoid Russ Road at the end of this week, that would probably be good. Now, as far as upcoming projects, I have presented before you this evening an engineer's estimate for Donald Drive. Says Donald Drive Water Line and Sanitary Improvements, City in Greenville. Actually, we're going to, as we've talked about the Donald Drive project, when we talked about this project earlier in the year, the project's scope was to start on Dorothy Lane, go south all the way down Donald, and then tie it, go down around the curve, and tie in Shawnee. Shawnee, thank you. Well, when we looked at the engineer's estimate for that project in its entirety, it was quickly discovered that we did not budget enough money at the beginning of the year. And one of the reasons for that, I believe, is in our process of switching engineering companies looking at the project. So, we decided to reduce the scope of the project to help meet our budget, because Donald Drive, the Donald Drive water line is in need of repair. There may be places that have more stainless steel repair clamps than it does ductile iron. So, anyways, with that being said, we have worked with the engineer to revise the engineer's estimate. Again, when we talked about the project in the beginning, we included the sanitary sewer relining, thinking that the project would be done earlier in the year, and we could maybe incorporate that with our regular 2017 relining project. However, we've missed that, and we would like to remove the sewer relining and hold off until 2018, and combine that portion or that project along with our 2018 sewer relining, which is a new, it's a rather, it's a new project that we will be completing on an annual basis, taking so many, only no feet of sewer line and relining it. We've been using a combination of relining and grouting. So, at the beginning of the year, I believe we budgeted approximately $250,000 for this project. However, earlier in the year, when the Fort Switzer Street water sewer line project came in, the water line was over budget. However, the sewer line was under budget. Total project for Fort Switzer Street came in within budget. However, we had to switch some money from different funds. And in doing so, it took money from the 35 water surplus account. So, in order to complete this portion of the Donald Line Water Improvement Project, we would need to appropriate approximately $120,000 based on this engineer's estimate. Now, we could, if you give me authorization to bid this project, we could bid it, see where the bids come in, and then make a more appropriate appropriation at that time.
So, this estimate here does not include the grouting?
It does not include sanitary sewer relining.
Relining.
And when I say we budgeted $250,000, we budgeted $250,000 out of the water fund.
But the water fund is...
Is running short, because we needed to pay for Fort Switzer.
But the project still goes down to the connection on Shawnee?
It will not. That was going to be a $700,000 project.
So, what are we talking about from?
Oh, I'm sorry. The parameters would be for Dorothy Lane to Rhodes Avenue.
And then, next year would be the, you would do the other section of it?
Well, we could. In speaking with Gary Evans, the department head, the section from Rhodes Avenue to Dorothy Lane is the area that is in most disrepair. The other section, we included, thinking that if, well, if we could get it all, if we could get it all done for that particular price, let's do it all, because it is our intention to pave next year all of Donald Drive. So, the intention was to get the water line in the ground and not disturb the street.
If we wait for the bidding process and then have to, will that cause a problem? If we wait till bidding and then prepare legislation after that, that'll add extra timeframe. Will that be a problem or not?
Not necessarily. We would just need to pass the appropriations ordinance before we...
Award the bid.
Award the bid. You don't want to award a bid before, if we don't have the money appropriated for it.
I don't think it'd hurt any to bid it.
I don't either, because it gives us a much truer value, and it could come in over the estimate here, too. And we'd have to come back another time. So, I think, go ahead and bid it and see where we're at.
Really, the main purpose of the conversation tonight was just to make you aware that we wouldn't need additional money if we want to move forward with this project.
And that'll give the finance committee, we can look at finances with the auditor a little bit and see where we're at also.
So, no objections to bringing legislation forward at the next meeting?
For bidding.
Correct. Legislation for bidding. And then, the next ongoing project, I want to go back to the Fort Switzer Street and talk a little bit about street lighting. We've discussed street lighting for Fort Switzer Street previously, and wanted to clarify a few points. We've determined that, just due to the overall cost of decorative lighting, that it would be in our best interest that if we, if the city chooses to use decorative lighting, we would install that decorative lighting from Sycamore Street to the curve, where it turns from Fourth to Switzer Street. And then, from the curve down to Pine Street, we would install a metal, similar to what we did out in front of the school. We would install an aluminum pole with a Cobra head fixture LED. Okay? In doing this, when we originally wrote the grant application for streetlights, streetlights were not included. So, we went back to ODOT for determination that if we included streetlights in our overall project, would they pay for it? And due to the fact that streetlights are essential to any streetlight project, ODOT said, yes, it's a given. We will pay for 80% of the streetlights. However, we will only pay for 80% of a standard light fixture, which would be the aluminum pole, Cobra head, and LED light fixture. However, another caveat to ODOT paying for street lightings as a part of their project is that the street lighting portion needs to be designed by an ODOT-approved electrical engineer. So, obviously, Moat is not that ODOT-qualified electrical engineer, so we need to outsource the electrical portion of the project, and that cost is going to be $19,600. So, ODOT will pay not only for the, not only 80% of the light fixtures, but they will also pay 80% of the underground electric, which we will need for the decorative lighting. When we get to the aluminum pole with a Cobra head, it will go back to overhead lighting, like it is currently.
Do they pay for 80% of the cost design?
They do not pay for design.
Is choice one unapproved?
No.
No. Okay.
No. And Moat will not do this, but Moat would contract with the engineer, and then, we would just pay Moat the $19,600.
That's an awful lot of money to just say, we need a light right there. There was one before, let's put one back. I mean...
Well, there's, again, you follow the ODOT standards. It has to follow so many lumens. Make sure it's adequately lit.
Would that be better lit than what it is now?
Absolutely.
Okay. That's a plus.
It's gonna look different, because all those would be on trees.
But it'll be a more continuous lit.
And so, we need to come up with money for this also.
Correct.
Well, we're spending a lot of money here. I'm gonna chime in and agree. But if we're getting 80% of a covered cost, we can't ignore that either.
Is it 80%?
Is that engineering cost?
Is it 80% of the decorative lighting?
No. It's 80% of the standard light fixture. We will pay the difference.
What would that difference be?
Looking at the cost, the cost of the design at $19,600, the difference between 80% of the standard and the decorative lighting for those three blocks, which is about what it is, isn't it?
But you also have to provide engineering for, you provide engineering for the entire section, not just the decorative.
I know, no, but I'm saying, it's $19,600 for the cost of the design for the engineering.
Yes.
Plus, the upgrade of the lights for the three blocks...
Yes.
Is still under $25,000.
Out of pocket?
For us, yes.
I believe you're gonna be looking, there's gonna be more of a difference between a $2,000 aluminum pole versus, you know, potentially, a $5,000 decorative light.
So, three?
I'd almost say two, without the decorative lighting, put in the standard, and maybe cut down that difference.
You're still going to, you're still going to engineer something.
Right. Correct.
Okay.
I'm trying to look at how to offset that $19,600.
Let's look at it, let's look at it this way. And because we're gonna put street lighting in and we'll provide the engineering, we have to come up with that difference between decorative and standard. Therefore, we are bidding both as a part of the project to come up with that delta. We can look at it at the time of awarding the project, which direction we want to go.
Because of this, it's gonna become a question when the bidding comes out. Is it all right for the finance committee to meet, or at least myself as finance chair, to be with the auditor and be able to come up with figures if the money is available, where it would come from? So, we will be able to present that at that time?
I would, I would prefer it be a committee assignment.
I would, too.
Yeah.
There's something to be said about this area also, the having the decorative lighting.
Well, that's what I'm thinking also. You've got Memorial Hall right there, and then, you've got several stately old homes that would... And it's a gateway into the downtown district from the south.
If there's a place where you might want something that's down there, take that consideration.
So, I would make that a committee assignment, that they review the, that the finance committee review the proposal with the Safety Service Director and the mayor and the auditor.
Okay.
Is that reasonable?
Yes. I appreciate that. That way, when it comes, we'll be able to be informed.
Due date would be, how soon do you need that, Mr. Garrison?
Can we meet by, can we get it done by first or second meeting in September?
Yeah.
Which?
Don't forget the fairs in there.
My God, we gotta close down.
Yeah, I know.
Bet the last week.
We will attempt to have it completed by the first meeting, but assign it for the second meeting.
Okay.
Okay, Kurt?
Yes, great. Give me just a second here. I'm gonna kind of go get organized here. I'll preface the Marx conversation by reminding counsel that you instructed or asked that I obtain more information after the last meeting. And I went to open session with the commissioners in an effort to obtain some information. Really, no new information was obtained through that meeting. However, the commissioners were able to have meetings with Chief Deputy Whitaker and were able to come to a consensus that answered some of the questions that I presented to them. So, we'll start with that conversation, and a lot of those answers can be found on the document that you have in front of you. The top of it is entitled Dart County Marx Countywide Public Safety Communications Program Levy. This document was, I believe, authored by Chief Whitaker and/or a combination of his employees. In either event, it came from the county sheriff's department. And it provided some information to, this information was provided to, or will be provided to, the different EMS, fire chiefs, and police chiefs. I felt that it provided valuable information to our counsel. Therefore, I printed it out and wanted you to have the opportunity to read it. I'm not gonna go through the document, and it's scary. You can do that after the meeting. If you have questions, I'll be more than happy to address those questions with you on an individual basis. What I will point out to you is that the questions that I presented to the commission was what would happen in the event that the levy does not pass, and the ODNR radios are distributed to the various county agencies? Who would pay for expenses associated with those ODNR radios? The commission, by resolution at yesterday's meeting, has agreed to pay for the tuning and the installation of the Marx radios. So, that means that the mobile radios will be installed, and the police cruisers, ambulances, and fire trucks. They will pay for the programming. The programming is a rather large expense. All of those radios will have to be programmed with what's called a template. That means that it doesn't matter if I get into a City of Greenville police car or if I get into the Ansonia police cruiser. The radios will be identically programmed. It would not matter if I got into an Arcanum ambulance or a Greenville Township rescue ambulance. Those radios would be programmed identical. So, the county will pay for that. And then, the other large expense that was coming with the ODNR radios was the ongoing monthly service charge or user fee. Right now, that user fee, I believe, is legislated at $10 a radio. The county commission has agreed to pick up those charges for the next two years. So, after two years, that financial responsibility will be placed back on a certain discipline. Questions?
There's an article on the paper they advocate that says it's providing for the smaller communities. I didn't have a chance to read it thoroughly. I'm not sure what that means. Talks about the county commissioners providing funding for smaller communities.
All communities. It's not just, it's not just communities, it's...
Agencies.
Agencies. Some of your EMS that cover the various townships are not necessarily a part of a community, but provide EMS for various townships. They're, like I said, all disciplines. Law, EMS, fire are all covered. Would like to clarify and again reiterate and continue to talk about the .45 mil levy that will be placed on the November ballot, and what that means for the City of Greenville and what that means for its citizens. And I need to jump around just a little bit, if you will indulge. But I've given you another document. This document is a document that I originated this evening that outlined what it would cost the City of Greenville if there were no ODNR radios and the levy did not pass, what it would cost the City of Greenville to go to Marx. And that also, understand that those ODNR radios will be phased out. We do not know if they will be phased out in three years, five years, seven years, or 10 years. Okay? But at some time, they're gonna be phased out, and if the levy passes... But at some time, they're gonna be phased out, and if the levy passes, what type of resources will come back to the City of Greenville? Because Chief Whitaker made an excellent statement, and that excellent statement is the fact that if the levy passes, that levy money is coming back to the communities. Yes, it is paid to the county, the county needs to put that levy money in a separate fund, and the funds from that separate account are used to fund the Marx radios. So what would come back to the City of Greenville over time? You can see that in the police department, we have a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars worth of Marx radios if we purchase them new. For the fire department, we're a little over a hundred and twenty-nine thousand. Now, I'm gonna leave the consoles out of that for right now, but, you know, right there, we are talking about two-hundred-and-seventy, two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars worth of radio equipment needed for Marx. So that would be the resources that the City of Greenville will need to obtain at whatever point that the ODNR radios fail, but also realize that this levy has no end, it's perpetual. So as radios fail, as radios need to be replaced, levy will pay for that replacement. So that will not be a burden that will come back to the city, which would go to, would be a burden upon its general fund, and/or its CIP, depending on how we decided to make those purchases. Any specific questions about the levy that I can answer for council? I, I would just like to note that, and, and in the document, it's noted very well, that money generated by the levy will be placed into a separate account. That money will be used for the purchase of mobile and portable radios, in-car repeaters, console upgrades, and expenses to install, maintain the radio equipment, and I believe I left out the ongoing monthly user fee that's associated with each radio. So if the levy passes, that is what it will cover. And you can see by the numbers that I've given you, what portion of that will come back to the City of Greenville. Now, the money cannot be used, and it will not be used, for any nine-one-one equipment and/or salaries. The overall program and expenses will be overseen by the sheriff. As the sheriff, he will be in control of the countywide public safety communication And if homeowners have not seen this yet, let it be known that the levy will cost a homeowner fifteen dollars and seventy-five cents for every one hundred thousand dollars of value on their home. That's fifteen dollars and seventy-five cents per one hundred thousand.
That is tax value, right?
Correct.
Correct.
Any questions? Then the last thing I would like to talk about as it concerns Marx, we continue to research different consoles. We know that in our dispatch center, our two consoles are reaching the end of their useful life. We know that to upgrade to the Marx system, we really need to update our consoles. So the pricing that I have for you this evening of two-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars is to replace our two consoles, and this is through a vendor, the name of the vendor is J&amp;K, and they sell equipment that is manufactured by a company named Z-tron. We are not, or we are looking at the Motorola as well as Z-tron, but we do know that Motorola is much more expensive, probably to the tune of forty thousand dollars total, just on the consoles.
Invest the console strictly for the Marx radio.
Well, let me give a little bit better explanation. As we went through the sales process, and it's a, I continued to learn more about the consoles. Our current console system, it would take a lot of updating to be able to broadcast over the Marx. Could it be done? Yes. But due to the age of our consoles, it really doesn't make good sense to invest that kind of money to make that happen, because we're going to need to purchase new consoles in the future, and so we would be spending money twice. But a console is really, it is truly a communications center. Because of Marx being on the eight-hundred system, there are certain electronic needs that have to happen in order to broadcast over the Marx system. It will not work, Marx will not work on a standard console, is what I'm trying to say. There are certain upgrades that you need to purchase, whether it's on our old system or our new system. Now, aside from that, the same console can broadcast Marx, it can broadcast VHF, it could broadcast UHF simultaneously. Because what that computer does, from the same console. So what happens is, is we have a dispatcher who's sitting in front of this console, and this dispatcher looks on her screen, and it's very well labeled, will be labeled Marx, all the different channels are labeled, and she clicks on it, and she can broadcast over it. What we don't see in the dispatch center are the various radios that are sitting in our basement right now. And that computer system speaks to those radios, and those radios then broadcast via our antenna outside of our building to the various entities. So on our console right now, we have the street department, which is UHF, we have the police and fire department, that's VHF. Okay? So the main purpose of updating our consoles right now is due to the fact that our consoles have, are reaching the end of their useful life. As we look to the future and what type of communication systems we're going to need, and with the county going to Marx, providing us with these Marx radios, and then also, keep in mind that, and, and if you can recall, several years ago, with the VH, uh, radio, VHF radios, we talked about narrowbanding. And the City of Greenville, along with all the other entities, had to spend a lot of money with P&amp;R Communications to narrowband our radios. When we narrowbanded those radios, our coverage decreased. They told us it wouldn't in the beginning, but it did. So right now, we have coverage problems with our VHF radios. We know that with the Marx radio, our coverage will greatly increase. Right now, I cannot take a VHF radio to the interior of the new K-8 facility and be able to get out. Actually, the school's spending a lot of money right now to put in a repeater that will pick up that signal throughout the building. However, with a Marx radio, I have better coverage. Another good example is Lowe's. I can go right inside the glass doors at Lowe's Home Improvement with a VHF radio and not get a signal. I can walk right inside that building right now with a Marx radio, and I can go almost everywhere in that building and not have a problem. The only pro, the only place we had a major problem with the Marx radio system was in the very middle of the Whirlpool Manufacturing Center. Now, the warehouse wasn't done when we did that propagation study, but in a, you know, only makes sense that in the middle of the Whirlpool Manufacturing Facility with all the metal, we most likely, you wouldn't get out with any kind of a radio. So the upgrade to Marx, even though we have a VHF system that doesn't need to be replaced, we're not in as bad a shape as what the Dart County Sheriff is, we do lack on coverage. And a lack of coverage is also an employee safety issue. So that is our major push to go to the Marx system, is not only just because the county is doing it, but we do see an added benefit as to the coverage, radio coverage in the So as we talk about the consoles and its upgrade, and getting information from various vendors, my question to council this evening, with, I believe, they stated, or the chief deputy stated in April the eighteenth, go-live date for Marx, talking to the different manufacturers, it could be anywhere from four to eight weeks, four to eight weeks to get our consoles installed. Would you like to have a council committee that we could call meetings with and provide information on the consoles as to what different features we're looking at, the differences between the two manufacturers, so that when we get to the, the time that we're ready to make a purchase, we can move that forward? Both, whether it is Z-tron or Motorola, both systems are on the state procurement, or we can purchase through the state procurement process, meaning that we would not have to bid it.
Well, no matter what, we're gonna need Marx consoles, correct?
We need consoles that have the ability to broadcast over Marx, yes. And, and I know I planted that seed in everyone's mind, that it was a Marx console. It's not. It's a console that broadcasts the Marx, over the Marx radio system.
Remember, you reap what you sow.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Well, that looks like the safety committee issue. Mr. Hensley?
Yes, sir.
Chairman. And that's Mr. Rogers and Mr. Gottlieb. So if you can work with the safety service director, how soon do you need that information?
Let, let's put in a, a lengthy completion date, maybe by the beginning of the year. It would be something, as we have information, that rather than bringing all that information to council every couple of weeks, that we can meet with the committee, kinda keep them abreast of what was going on, and maybe even when they feel they're ready to make a report to council or a recommendation.
It's a, I won't say complicated, but it is something that needs some long-term thought.
Yeah, and I, and, and, yeah, and I, and I kinda need a floating deadline.
Okay. And let's, let's talk about, let's, let's shoot for the last meeting in December, and if we need to extend it from then, we'll go from there. Because this is the time when we'll have it flipped in some council members.
Right.
January one, so if we can get it accomplished by then, let's see. If not, then fine, we'll just end the, end the assignment and reassign it in January.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
That sounds good. That sounds good. And then also included with that assignment, I know at the last meeting, I, I spoke about the, the nine-one-one, the PSAPS, as far as the recent decisions with the, the county nine-one-one committee. I, I would still, we've, we've, we were working on pricing with Z-tron on that matter, they continue to give us their best price. I put it there for informational purposes, and we will be discussing with the committee to whether they see any kind of added benefit to making that kind of investment in the equipment. There is still a use for that equipment, even though we're not answering calls, it does provide certain pieces of information and provides a certain function in, in the dispatch process, but it'll be up to council to determine if a quarter of a million dollars, if, if it's, if it's worth, if the service or level of service it provides is, is worth that amount of money, so. Any other questions? I have just a few more things under miscellaneous, and then I will be done. I'm gonna start out with a huge thank you, Person-Centered Service, Mark, you know, I, as a community, I don't think we can say enough about this organization. At the beginning of, of the summer, you know, they approached the park board and the city council about opening the roundhouse. You know, they've religiously been there every day, you see their bus, you see their members working, making an impact on our community, making a phone call, hey, our street department can't get to the mulching of our, our city signs. And this is kind of always a pet peeve, it's one of those things that just gets let go because other things take priority. Called Mark up, within a week, it was done. The next project that we're going to ask them to help us with, help the city, we've received numerous complaints about the condition of our city fire hydrants, and the fact that a lot of them need painted. And obviously, to dedicate city resources to that project, if we do that, then we're taken away from something else. And obviously, that needs to happen in the summer, and there just, there are so many projects, that is a project that we just seem to never get to. So again, we made the phone call, and the PCS has graciously stated that they would be more than happy to help us get the fire hydrants painted. So a big thank you to them. If the public, if you see them out, Mark put on Facebook, you know, wave to them, and it doesn't hurt to stop and have a conversation, and just say hi, and say, we thank you for your service. So Mark, Greg, tell them that we appreciate, and thank you for your service. The next thing I would like to discuss as far as miscellaneous, it is fair time, and nobody was aware of that, just letting you know. It is very great Dart County fair time, and with that, comes our annual posting of no parking in certain areas adjacent to the fairgrounds. I've already received a couple complaints, one being a homeowner that just moved in in April and has not been through the process prior, so help to educate, and again, just a statement to the public that, you know, it is not our intention to cause a disruption in the resident's life, but realize that we understand that it's an inconvenience, that you may not be able to park in front of your house like you normally do. However, in the event of an emergency, we need to be sure that we can get an ambulance and/or a fire truck down our city streets. And due to the heavy congestion of the fair traffic, because people choose not to take advantage of the free fair parking, they choose to park on our city streets, it becomes congested, and if we allow parking on both sides, it would just, it would be really hard in the event of a major emergency to get either an ambulance or a fire apparatus down that street. So that's why we make those provisions for these nine days, and also the intersection of Burke Street and Switzer Street at Gate One, there'll be some traffic pattern changes like there have been in the last two years. Those changes are necessitated by the amount of pedestrian traffic, folks that choose to cross right there. So if you come out of Gate One, you'll be making a continuous right-hand turn. If you're coming into town on Switzer, I believe you're not gonna be able to make any, any turns through there. So that public announcement was made on Facebook, it's on our website, if you care to see that diagram, and take a look at how things will be changing. And then I promise, the last topic from me tonight is about the, I received a phone call from John Cook, county administrator, and it is that time of year to consider whether or not the city will participate in the Health and Wellness Fair that will be held at Romers. What the county needs to know from the City of Greenville or get a commitment, last year we committed two hundred dollars to help defray some of the cost of Romers, and then also to our employees, we provided a seventy, or a seven dollar and twenty-five cents box lunch. And I know that the, the employees that participate greatly appreciate that gesture by council, and so I come back to you this year to see if you would wish or choose to participate at that same level in two thousand and seventeen.
Anyone have any objections?
No.
No.
Do we need some, what legislation prepared for that?
Well, I will give, you will, I believe, need some legislation as far as appropriations, and just a commitment, I need to make a commitment to John Cook one way or the other, and then also start the sign-up process for the employees.
Okay. So you will have that at the next meeting, legislation?
We'll have that in a very future meeting.
Okay.
In a future.
When is that?
Um, October the nineteenth.
Oh, okay, so we're not.
We've got a little bit of time.
Yes, not like. Okay, thank you.
With that, Mr. Council President, I pass.
All right, thank you, sir. Moving on. Law Director, Mr. Brand.
Everybody's laughing, I don't know why. I, I have a bit of news about our newest assistant law director. A week ago yesterday, he, his wife delivered him his first child, their first child, Everett Henry, great middle name, Lattice, is nine pounds, twenty-one and a half inches long. Mother and child are doing well. With that, I pass.
Wonderful. That's good news. That's good news. City Auditor, Mrs. Welborn.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I only have one item to bring forward tonight. I was recently made aware of the fact that there has been some confusion on what the bond issue that you have asked that we move forward on is paying for. So I wanted to reiterate again, I thought it was clear before, but like I said, there's been some confusion. Building improvements are going to be approximately six-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars, and we are also going to get some new dispatch equipment around two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollars. There had been some talk that it was all going to dispatch equipment. So I wanted to clarify the fact that the majority of this bond issue is going toward improvements that are very much needed here at the city building.
Does that include the city building and the annex?
The annex as well, correct.
I thought it was.
Correct, correct. So with that, I pass.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the auditor? No committee reports yet for this evening, we have three ordinances to consider, and first, supplemental appropriations.
An ordinance to make additional appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Greenville, state of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2017. This ordinance authorizes appropriations to the general fund for internal audit fees general in the amount of five thousand dollars. These funds are needed to complete the 2016 state audit.
Motion to suspend the rules, read this ordinance, reading by title only for a second, third time.
Mr. Tryon, to suspend the rules, read the ordinance by title, second, third time, discussion. Call roll, please.
Hensley?
Yes.
Hattashell?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Tryon?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
An ordinance to make additional appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Greenville, state of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2017.
Motion to adopt. There you are. Motion by Mr. Tryon to adopt the supplemental appropriations, ordinance, discussion. Call roll, please.
Hensley?
Yes.
Hattashell?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Tryon?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Okay, next we have a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into contract with the Montrose Group for Consulting Services to establish downtown redevelopment districts. This resolution authorizes the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract with the Montrose Group LLC for consulting services associated with the development of downtown redevelopment districts in the amount of seventeen thousand five hundred dollars.
Make a motion to suspend the rules in this resolution and read it by title only second, third time.
Motion by Mr. Godwin to suspend the rules, read the resolution by title, second, third time, discussion. Call roll, please.
Hensley?
Yes.
Hattashell?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Tryon?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
A resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract with the Montrose Group for consulting services to establish downtown redevelopment districts.
Motion to adopt.
Motion by Mr. Oliver to adopt the resolution, discussion. Call roll, please.
Hensley?
Yes.
Hattashell?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Tryon?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
And finally, a resolution to assess liens on properties for noxious weed mowing and declaring an emergency.
A resolution certifying to the Dark County Auditor certain amounts to be entered up on tax duplicates as liens representing expenses incurred by the city of Greenville, Ohio, for its services rendered in cutting and destroying noxious weeds or removing litter pursuant to authority granted by section 731.51 to 731.53 inclusive to the Ohio Revised Code and declaring an emergency. This resolution will assess noxious weed mowings to multiple parcels. This resolution has an emergency clause.
Motion to suspend the rules, read this resolution by title only, second and third time.
Motion by Mr. Oliver to suspend the rules, read the resolution by title, second, third time, discussion. Call roll, please.
Hensley?
Yes.
Hattashell?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Tryon?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
A resolution certifying to the Dark County Auditor certain amounts to be entered up on tax duplicates as liens representing expenses incurred by the city of Greenville, Ohio, for its services rendered in cutting and destroying noxious weeds or removing litter pursuant to authority granted by section 731.51 to 731.53 inclusive of the Ohio Revised Code and declaring an emergency. A resolution certifying to the Dark County Auditor certain amounts to be entered up on tax duplicates as liens representing expenses incurred by the city of Greenville, Ohio, for its services rendered in cutting and destroying noxious weeds or removing litter pursuant to authority granted by section 731.51 to 731.53 inclusive of the Ohio Revised Code and declaring an emergency.
Move to adopt the emergency clause.
Motion by Mr. Rogers to adopt the emergency clause, discussion. Call roll.
Hensley?
Yes.
Hattashell?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Tryon?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
And that's it on the resolutions and ordinances, nothing under or new business. What communications do we have?
Monthly reports were received from the street and transit departments. A letter of training dated August 14th, 2017 was received from Assistant Fire Chief Shannon Fritz regarding his attendance at Ohio Arson School. And a letter of training was received from firefighter Jeremy Volker regarding his attendance at trench rescue class. These reports and letters have been distributed to council.
That's it? Any other items of communication? If there are none, call down to council, please.
Mr. Hensley?
I'll pass.
Mrs. Hattashell?
Well, I would like to thank the PCS for all what they do for our community. I think it's fantastic, and thank you, young lady, and you just keep truckin' on.
Thank you.
And everybody, please be safe with the fair coming up, and watch out for kids, and watch out for each other. And with that, I pass.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes, I was very pleased and pleasantly surprised to see the two new signs in front of the entrance to the city building today. Very nicely done, very informative, and a vast improvement over the signage before, concerning, of course, the building hours and where the location for the secure dropbox is. Thanks to everyone. I'm gonna go out on a limb here a little bit. I love my country. We're not always right, we're not always wrong, that's for sure. My uncle served in World War II in the Army Air Corps, and my oldest brother was a gunnery sergeant in the European theater. And folks, the way I feel, and this is my own personal opinion, when I see a swastika or the iron cross, people going sikhau or whatever they wanna try and do, it really gets my ire up, because I think we're forgetting a very huge, important part of our history in getting rid of bigotry, oppression. My Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, was born a Jew, and he was persecuted by the Germans who killed a lot of Jews. I will stand for it. If I see it, I'll turn and walk away. I will not confront, I will not fight, but I will not give you an audience that you can talk to. With that, I shall pass.
Mr. Rogers?
I'm gonna pass.
Mr. Smith?
I'll pass.
Mr. Tryon?
Yes.
President Burkett?
Just want to thank everyone for coming. I failed to do something the other day, August the 1st, and me of all people should have known that August the 3rd was Treaty Day. If you don't know what that is, look up your history, and about the signing of the Treaty of Greenville with Anthony Wayne and the Thirteen Indian Nations. I forgot to bring my tricorn hat, that's what I failed to mention, and that's, that's what it's all about.
I was really surprised you didn't have it.
Yeah, well, I, what, what can I say? But anyway, no, it is a very important time in our history, and it kind of goes along with Mr. Oliver's concern that, you know, a lot of people did a lot for this country. And the thing that I always remember, because that was after the Revolutionary War, but all the members of the signers of the treaty, or the, excuse me, the Declaration of Independence, and the first members of Congress became, well, they lost their homes, they pledged their, their spirit, their money, and their support, and a lot of them lost their money. They lost everything. They'll make this country great. So, anyway, little history lesson there, yes.
I'm sorry. Mr. Godwin?
I'm sorry, Mr. Godwin. Go right ahead.
Okay. Just want to thank the PCS for doing what all they're doing out there, and the other groups, we are the majority around town that does painting projects for the city also. And again, thanks for everybody being here, and thanks for the people watching. I'll pass, and now, Mr. Burkett.
Okay, well, I just thank you all for coming, and we will entertain a motion to rise to executive session.
Motion to rise to executive session.
Motion by Mr. Tryon to rise to executive session for the purpose of conference with an attorney regarding threatening pending litigation. Call roll.
Hensley?
Yes.
Hattashell?
Uh, yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Tryon?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Stand in short recess while we clear the chamber and shut down the TV. Thank you all.